Thank you. Ms. Schludow, can we have the roll call, please?
Board Member Allen.
His microphone's off.
Ah, there he is.
There we go.
Board Member Butts. Board Member Gesund.
Here.
Board Member Krug.
Here.
Board Member McAlpine.
Here.
Board Member Euler. Alternate Ward.
Here.
Alternate Handship.
Here.
Chair Evans.
Here. Okay, this board is a seven-member board, and we do have seven members here, so we have a full board tonight. Next item is approval of the agenda. Does any member have any changes to the agenda? If not, entertain a motion to...
Move to approve the agenda for this evening as presented.
Support.
All right, we have motion and support. Any comments? Sue, I see your hands up.
Oh, I'll support his motion.
Great, okay, so we've got motion and support. And hearing no additional comments, Ms. Schludow, if we have a roll call vote, please.
Gesund.
Yes.
Handship.
Yes.
Krug.
Yes.
McAlpine.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes. Chair, next item is approval of our meeting minutes from March 11th, 2020. We all received those in our packet. Does any member have any comments? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Move to approve the minutes.
Support.
Okay, motion by Gesund, support by McAlpine. Any comments? Ms. Schludow, the roll call vote, please.
Handship.
Yes.
Krug.
Yes.
McAlpine.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Gesund.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes. Yeah, next item of business is our first application for property at 3849 Kipling. Ms. Schludow, could you provide us a summary of the request?
Yes, the applicant located at 3849 Kipling is requesting a variance to exceed the width of a single-family residence driveway beyond the rest of the garage area. Per our zoning ordinance, a garage is allowed to extend the width of the garage, but no further, and then must taper to 16 feet at the driveway at the sidewalk. The applicant is requesting to extend his driveway area beyond the width of the garage by seven feet in order to encapsulate, in order to have additional parking for his personal vehicles and temporary parking for any trailers or RV vehicles that he currently possesses. I have provided in my May 4th, 2020 review letter, the five standards of review. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do any members of the board have any questions for staff? And I recommend that you use the raise hand function in the Zoom, just so we can keep everybody from talking at the same time. Mr. Allen.
Yes, I was just curious if any work had begun on this project yet, or is this fresh, still awaiting approval or denial?
This is still waiting approval or denial.
Okay, thank you.
We wouldn't issue a building permit or a flatwork permit for this.
Right, it's happened in the past, that's why I ask.
Yes, no, this is...
Yes.
He's abiding by all the rules.
Very good.
No further questions from any board members? Great, and I see the applicants here, Mr. Pollak, welcome.
Hi, how are you?
Good, good. At this point, this is your opportunity to explain to the board why you need your variance. Now, we've all read your application in detail, and I can say at least some of us have gone by the site and toured the neighborhood as well. You're not obligated to repeat your entire application, but you may if you want. If there's anything you want to add to it, to tell the board, you may do so. So, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. As Aaron stated, I was looking to expand the driveway seven feet from the end of the garage south. See, currently, there's a fence there, which is actually on my property. So, go almost up to the fence and then down, and then tapering down to code 16 feet. And then also, the actual entrance way to the driveway would be inside code. As it's in the application, I kind of have an odd lot, per se, for Berkeley. So, with the distance, I can do a circle driveway, but it would cause a lot of disruptions. I'd have to move trees, underground sprinkler systems. It would really eliminate a lot of the green space that's there. And currently, so, this was an option that I thought would be a little more cost-effective. Keep everything intact that's currently there, it's been existing there for way before I ever lived here. And the space that I'm asking for is kind of a, I don't want to say, it's kind of a dead space as it is today. I can't really utilize it for anything. It's, you know, it's, you know, seven feet of, I mean, currently, seven feet of mud right now. But, so, I'm looking to extend that and then bring it back down into code in regards to where it meets the sidewalk. And then, obviously, it would be code at the street as well. So, it would add a lot of ability for myself and my family in regards to parking and trailers. I have a trailer that comes in and out once in a while, I have one out there right now. But I usually don't store anything there long-term, it's typically in a week or two, and then I move it out. So, that's about it. I think, you know, I'd be more than willing to answer any questions that anyone has.
Sure, okay, well, thank you very much. Do any board members have any questions for the applicant? Ms. Ward.
Yes, I hope I looked at the right house, I believe I did. Do you have a boat, correct?
There is a boat in the driveway right now, yes.
Okay, would that be moved off from in front of the garage to this new area of cement?
It could be used for that, for sure, giving us more space on the driveway. But again, like I said, it's not there permanently, it comes in and out. I store it up north, but yes, that's exactly one of the purposes, as you mentioned, Maria.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, and I have spoken to, I forgot to mention, can I keep going?
Yes.
Sorry about that. I have spoken to multiple neighbors, I've spoken to Marlaus Brink, who's next door, her family, she's actually 94. But I've spoken to her son, who works executive of their house. I've spoken to multiple neighbors in the neighborhood, and at least to me, their feedback has been no problem, don't see any issues. I think we've talked to about five or six, a couple, like you mentioned, people walking by and so forth, so.
Okay.
All been positive on my end.
Very good, very good, and later on, we'll have an opportunity for public comment. Ms. Ward.
I would like to ask Aaron if by chance there were any communications from neighbors?
Oh, and I'll get to that in just a moment.
Okay, I guess I'm rushing.
That's okay.
It's interesting that I don't see any neighbors here wishing to speak on behalf of or either against this issue.
Okay, Ms. Mathis.
Hi, yes, for everyone in the Zoom, I'm sorry to interrupt. Can we just make sure if you're not speaking to put yourself on mute? We're experiencing a little bit of feedback, so as long as you're not speaking, just put yourself on mute, and then we'll be open. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do any other board members have any questions for the applicant? I've got, I've got, I think, just one. Mr. Pollak, do you utilize your garage for car parking, or if not, what for?
Well, it's a smaller garage, it's a two-car garage, built in, I think, 49 or 50. I can't get my truck in the garage, and it's physically impossible, the drive, the garage is too low. My wife's vehicle, it's pretty tight, I mean, it barely fits. So, I guess in emergency circumstances, we could put a car in there. But currently, we don't have anything in, it's full of kit stuff and my stuff.
Sure, okay, Ms. McAlpine.
Sorry, I had to find my unmute button. So, I guess I would ask the petitioner if he were able to use the garage, though, and the vehicles were put into the garage, the boat or the trailer would come into the driveway, and then every time he wanted a car out, he would have to essentially be moving those things out of the driveway, pulling the car out, putting it, I mean, it's, in my mind, it does make it a little bit complicated and complex to pull a car out of a driveway, given the scenario that you just described. Is that correct?
Yes, if there was a car in the garage, I would have to physically hook up the trailer, move it, potentially move it, and then move it back. It would be a lot of orchestrating of vehicles.
And if the car was in the garage, then I don't know how you could hook it up to the trailer, pull the trailer out. Well, I guess you could, but it would be a lot, okay, thank you.
Well, I use my truck most of the time, so.
Thank you. Okay, do any other members of the board have any questions for the applicant?
I do.
Okay. Excuse me, Mr. Allen, yes?
Yes.
Go ahead.
You had mentioned previously that you had quite a large mud hole back there right now. Is part of the plan here to clean that up by putting concrete in that area?
Yes, sir, that would definitely clean it up quite a bit. I think with the tree, I mean, it would be, it's challenging to get stuff to grow there, I've thrown seed down there. There's a, there's a lot of water, it's a pretty good grade right there. So, there's a lot of the water that comes off of the gutters, actually just washes all, everything out of their way.
Okay.
And it just, you know, drains right out to the street.
Thank you. Okay, any board members have any more questions for the applicant? I have one question for staff, that some of the comments from the board members got me thinking about. What are the regulations regarding parking things like boat trailers? For example, for this property, when could you park one, where would you have to park it? How does that work in Berkeley?
Well, for permanent storage, it would have to be located in the rear or side yard. But during our discussions, the applicant had noted that, you know, he uses this as a temporary basis, not for permanent storage. Therefore, to park a trailer or boat in the front yard, you're allowed up to 48 hours.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
And any kind of commercial, obviously, commercial type of semi-truck parking is prohibited.
Sure, okay, and because this lot fronts on two streets, but it's not a corner, I'm presuming the yard facing Wakefield is the backyard, right?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, I had one thing, that I don't, currently, there's no driveway back off of Wakefield. So, there's no parking back there at this juncture. We looked at it, we talked about it, but again, it was, it's a cost, it gets costly, and again, it takes up a lot of the green space on that side of the property.
Hey, any additional questions from the board members? Thank you, okay, thank you, Mr. Pollak. And I'm just checking the order of procedure here for our video conference best practices. And at this point, it's now the opportunity for public comment, and this is a public hearing. So, the public will have an opportunity to speak on this agenda item. We just asked that if you're utilizing the webcast, that you use the raise hand function. Select management participants on the bottom of your dashboard, and then select the more button in the bottom right-hand corner. Our moderator will call your name aloud and unmute you so that you can speak. And for anyone who's called in, you can be placed in the queue for public comment by selecting star nine. Our moderator will announce the last four digits of your phone number for recognition and unmute you so that you can speak. Participants will have three minutes to speak, as they would if we were meeting in person. Once your three minutes is up, you will be muted by our moderators. Additionally, comments can be submitted prior to or at this time to zoning@berklemish.net, that's zoning@berklemish.net, where residents and community members can submit public comments as well. Your email must be able to be read in less than three minutes. Given the circumstance with the virtual space, we may not be able to read through all of the email comments, but know that we will have them stored and acknowledged on the public record. To participate in the public comment, you can dial by phone at 1-312-626-6799. Enter the meeting ID, that number is 952-8278-4200. At this time, we'll review public comments. Ms. Schludow, could you begin with any emails or comments we've received prior to the meeting?
I have not received any comments, emails, calls, or inquiries regarding this case.
Thank you. And Ms. Mathis, do we have anyone in the queue waiting to speak?
Certainly, we do not.
No, okay. I'll give it just a minute, a few more seconds more, just in case people are dialing in. We just gave them a lot of information there. Okay, Ms. Mathis, any additional calls?
None at this time, Mr. Evans.
Okay. Last, for a final call for anyone who would like to comment, you can dial by phone at 312-626-6799. Enter the meeting ID, 952-8278-4200. Or you can email zoning@berklemish.net. Ms. Mathis or Ms. Schludow, is someone monitoring that email address, do we know? Affirmative? Okay, great.
Yes, yes, I am.
Perfect, good, good.
And we have not received any comments.
Okay. Well, this will be the final call, if anyone wants to contact the city. Okay, Ms. Mathis, I presume there's no one in queue, correct? Okay.
That is correct.
Great, well, at this point, I'll close the public hearing portion of the meeting and bring it back to the board for a discussion and vote on the matter. Would any member like to be recognized? Mr. Allen.
Yes, you folks, my fellow ZBA members have heard me speak of this a number of times, and generally speaking, I am vastly opposed to increasing the amount of impermeable space based on the problems that we have in our community with drainage. And I'm kind of lining up that way myself for this evening, because one thing that we don't have is enough runoff area, and we certainly don't want to encourage closing it in any further.
Any additional comments from any board members? Mr. Krug.
Joe, you're muted. All right, yeah, the thought I have on this particular piece of property, the fact that they have the ability to put a circular driveway in, which would be much more covered ground with concrete than what he's asking for to the side of the garage. And so, my thought is, is he's kind of asking for, how can I put this? He could put that circular driveway in, and like Steve was saying, we'd have, there'd be more concrete covering that ground, less permeable space, than if he does what he's doing alongside the garage.
Thank you. Ms. Ward.
My feeling is that based upon the unusual shape of the lot and the fact that he has a very short driveway, that additional parking is needed. I would definitely oppose any type of circular driveway because it would impact the trees, the two trees that are in the front yard. I think this is probably the best and least impactful for the neighborhood and also for this particular property.
Thank you. And Ms. McAlpine.
When we look at the five criteria in which a petitioner must meet in order to be granted a variance, I think the biggest one that have Mr. Krug and Ms. Ward have just brought up is the fact that there are a lot of different options, some are good and some are bad, in which he could move forward with this. But he has actually presented a plan that is requesting the minimum variance necessary to accomplish what he wants, which is to have some additional parking, given the design of his property, and the fact that without it, he can't truly use it in the way it could or should be intended to do so. So, given that, and looking at the other four criteria, I would make a motion that we do approve this request for a variance and move forward and allow the petitioner to expand the driveway as requested in the petition.
Okay.
I'll support that.
Motion by McAlpine, support by Ward to grant the variance. Mr. Gesund, your hand was up.
There we go. I'm having problems with the second standard, is the need for the variance is not the result of actions of the property owner or previous property owners. We've generally tried to stay away from making permanent variances that would follow future owners and previous owners. If the owner did not have a trailer and a boat, he wouldn't need the variance, and future owners wouldn't need the variance as well if they didn't have a trailer or a boat or five or six cars. And it's just troubling to me, that portion of what we need from our standards, that I agree meets the other four standards, but the second one is, I'm not sure how I can justify that.
Great, okay, thank you. Ms. McAlpine, your hand is up.
Yes, in looking at that particular point, it appears that, given the garage was built in 1949 and the size of our vehicles now is currently different, I don't think he has the ability to use his garage in the way that he normally would if it was a couple of years later and the garage was with a larger garage. So, that is, how I look at that, is he's stuck with a garage that was built to accommodate cars that were built almost 60 years ago, and given the fact that it sounds like he has a big truck and another car, I think that that does, that does put some burden on the petitioner and does not allow him to property, you know, to use his property or use his garage. So, that's just my, that's how I agree with it.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. I've given this some thought, and I appreciate everybody's comments. Ms. Ward, I see your hands up, I'll get to you in just a sec. I think this can meet some of our criteria, but I'm having trouble. I toured the neighborhood this afternoon. I saw, either within the applicant's block of Kipling or the street behind in Wakefield, just within that block, five one-car garages and/or driveways with considerably less area, noticeably less area than what exists out there now. And on Kipling, just one block south, I also saw five one-car garages. In addition, the applicant mentions trees, and I think having trees in the front yard, a number of people have them, a number of people don't. I mean, if people want trees and they don't want a driveway, they can do that. If they want trees there and other places, they can plant them, but if they want a driveway, I haven't heard anything tonight that would, market is unusual to have to remove the trees to do an improvement to the property. Is it everybody's opinion that trees look pretty good? And that having these trees go away would be injurious to the neighborhood? I'm not sure we call it injurious, I think it might be personal preference. The other challenge I have is that I don't think it's that unusual for anyone in Berkeley to have to jockey cars around. If someone decides they want equipment or vehicles that are really large, yeah, they might, in this instance, he said he can't fit his truck in the garage. In this instance, he said he can't fit his, his truck in the garage, but that's not always the standard. So, for those reasons, I'm challenged to vote yes on this. And I just think at least one or two of the criteria have been met. So, with that being said, Ms. McAlpine, is your hand still up? Is that you? No, okay. And Ms. Ward, yes, go ahead.
If we required the property owner to remove the trees and put in a circular driveway in front of his home, two things. One, I would, I have had trees removed, and it's very expensive. And number two, trees are extremely important for oxygenation, for our carbon, to eliminate our carbon footprint. And so, for that reason, the, the minimum amount of trees that we have to take down, healthy trees. Now, my trees were deceased, and they had to go. But these, from what I saw when I drove by, the trees looked healthy. So, I, I really am reluctant to, to see a reason to require the property owner to remove two trees and to put in a circular driveway. To me, that is a hardship on the property owner. And I agree with Ms. McAlpine that unfortunately, the garage was built in 1949, and cars were much, much smaller and much more compact than today's cars. And he may want to, in the future, consider taking the garage down and maybe rebuilding it. But right now, from a cost standpoint, that would be also a hardship. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McAlpine?
My question is, if his garage were to go from 19 feet to 20 feet, would he still be able to get his truck into his garage? And I apologize, I don't know, forgive me, I should know. But I mean, I know I have two cars in my garage. They're, they're, one of them is a larger car. But is one foot going to make a difference between him getting a truck in, in the garage? And given the fact that he stated that his wife's car barely fits in the garage, I, I don't know that, that 12 inches is going to make seriously a difference if his garage were 20 feet.
Sure. Mr. Pollak, can you answer Board Member McAlpine's question?
Yeah, so, so the garage itself, based on multiple houses that I've owned in the past, for two-car garages, it's, it's rather on the small side. I think you'll find most of the car garages that are two-car, are like two and a half, maybe even a little, little bit larger. Some, you know, will have a door for entrance and exit. I don't have that. Then one of the other odd things is the garage's height.
Sir, I think, I think the question, Mr. Pollak, if I could?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay, you're talking about height, yeah. She just wants to know if it could fit in there if you added a, made it one foot.
The garage height is the, is also a burden on the garage, too. It's, 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 it's a little lower than most that I've seen.
So, are you saying the truck could fit in there if it weren't for the height?
I mean, I, could you fit both vehicles in? Is that, is that your question?
Ms. McAlpine?
I guess my question is, you have a two-car garage. Given the vehicles that you have, if you had one more foot, would you be able to fit both vehicles into your garage?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Do we have any additional comments or discussion from any members of the board? We do have a motion on the table seconded to grant the variance. Okay. Seeing none, Ms. Schludow, could we have a vote?
Krug?
Yes.
McAlpine?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Allen?
No.
Gesund?
No.
Hanchit?
Yes.
Evans?
No. I believe that's seven, uh, four yeses, correct?
Correct, yes.
Well, congratulations, sir, you've received your variance. Thank you for attending and participating tonight.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Pollak, I'll be in touch with you over the next day or so to go over next steps.
Okay, that'd be great, thank you.
Thank you.
Your signs, did you want them down?
I will pick those up tomorrow morning.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, our next item is a request for a variance at property at 2079 West 12 Mile. Ms. Schludow, could you give the, us a summary of the request?
Yes. Uh, yes, I'd like to reference my May 4, 2020 review letter. This is for a requested variance at 2079 West 12 Mile, the American Legion Post 374, to replace an existing non-conforming sign. Typically, when a non-conformity wants to be replaced, as long as it's not enhanced or enlarged, it could be done. However, the sign ordinance is very specific that a non-conforming sign cannot be replaced even with base or lettering or type. It would need to be removed and brought into compliance. The pole sign that's currently in existence at 2079 in the front yard was installed in 2005, and it is legally, legally non-conforming. But in 2010, the sign ordinance was rewritten and required a five-foot minimum setback from the property line. The existing sign does not meet that, that threshold. The pole of where it is, is currently about two and a half feet from where the curbspace extends even further into the, into the front yard. I have prepared a summary of the standards for review, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do any members of the board have any questions for Ms. Schludow? Okay, seeing none. I'd just like to state for the record that as part of my job with the City of Troy, I do have business contacts with the applicant's firm, Ultimate Signs. The contacts are solely because of my job as the person who reviews and approves sign permits. I don't believe personally, I've met Ms. Kaiser, and I believe that I can act without any influence and fairly on this. And just wanted to state that to the board members and ask if there's any disagreement with that. Ms. McAlpine?
I too want to state for the record that my husband is actually a member of the American Legion, and we are actively inside the American Legion. We frequent them for their activities, for their dinner, for their drinks, et cetera. So, I just wanted to make that a public statement as well. And I do believe, though, given our affiliation, we don't really have anything to do with the day-to-day operations. We are not on any of the boards. We strictly support the organization and consider it a social club.
You believe you can act impartially?
Yes.
And apply the standards? Okay, great. Do any board members have any comments on Ms. McAlpine or Mike? Mike? None? Okay, great.
I see, I see no problem, Mr. Evans or Ms. McAlpine. It is far enough distant, the relationship, that I, I don't see a problem.
Great, thank you, Ms. Ward. Okay. Well, the applicant, Linda Kaiser, I see you're here, welcome. And we just asked you to turn your microphone on.
Sorry about that.
Not a problem. So, just like the other application, the board members have all received every page of it. We've all read it, and many of us, if not all of us, have gone by the property in response to your application. And while you're free to say anything to the board you want, including repeating everything in your application, know that we've looked at it carefully. But with that being said, tell us why you want your variance. Want to summarize or add anything to it? It's your turn.
Well, everything that, that was submitted, you know, they've been there for a long time. They do a lot for your community. And their sign was damaged. And if you've noticed, when you drive by on East 12 Mile, you can't even see their sign to even write on top of it. But the sign being damaged and everything, they want to update it, make it aesthetic very pleasing and bring more business in. And they will comply to the ordinance on the LED portion. It is within, it's a 32-square-foot sign total with the illuminated box sign and the LED. So, your ordinance says 40 square foot. It can be reduced in illumination, so the illumination will automatically adjust. They will be able to do all the messages and stuff from inside, so they don't have to go outside and change it. It's an updated sign. And also, they will, also be happy to help send out the messages to inspire people to attend your different community events. And maybe Bill wants to add to that.
And Bill, you're the applicant as well, I understand?
That's correct.
And you're, what's your affiliation with this?
I am presently the commander of the post. My name is Bill Eisenhower.
Bill, welcome, okay. Do you have anything to add to what Ms. Kaiser said?
Um, I had a list of points here. The sign was damaged when a tall truck pulled into the parking lot, hit the sign. Based on the age of the sign at that time, it was decided to upgrade to a digital. It was thought, as Linda has said, that the digital would provide more advertising capability, better visibility, and would modernize the appearance of the post. At the time, we, before we understood that there was a variance issue, they were able, said they would be able to use the existing pole and the foundation for the new sign, which would save us costs. Our insurance claim only provided funds to cover about two-thirds of that cost, which has required us to dip into our cash balance for the remainder. We have looked at one possible option would be to move the sign further east on the side of the parking lot, accommodating the five-foot standoff. But we looked at that, and the cost to do that was extremely burdensome with the necessity for a new foundation and then having the trench to that new location to make the installation of the electrical. It was just too cost prohibitive. Moving the present sign an additional three feet into the parking lot, as Linda has said, would make it more susceptible to damage with trucks pulling into the parking lot. And we fear that that would probably happen again. And additionally, there is the visibility issue in play. Moving the sign further three feet into the parking lot to meet the five-foot standoff greatly reduces the visibility of the sign for that traffic coming east on 12 Mile. Our primary advertising, the post and the City of Berkeley, to the public is that sign. We consider ourselves a mainstay in the support of the veteran community, both in Berkeley and the surrounding community. And we work hard at supporting Berkeley's activities, Berkeley Days, the Irish Fest, the Holiday Lights Program, the Taste of Berkeley, the Memorial Day Remembrance. And we also strongly support Berkeley's first responders. It has been and will continue to be our intention to utilize our new sign, as we have utilized our old sign, to promote our post and Berkeley City activities.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Do any members of the board have any questions for our applicants tonight? Seeing none. I, I do have a question for, Ms. Ward, I'm sorry, yes.
The Veterans Hall is in my neighborhood. And to be very honest, the sign that is currently there is pretty shoddy. Don't like to use that word, but it, it needs a facelift, to be honest. And I, I think what is being proposed here makes a lot of sense. And I can definitely see that if they moved the sign farther in to the parking lot, that people would hit it. I'm sorry, but that's just human nature. They can't drive. So, I think leaving it where it is makes a great deal of sense.
Okay, thank you. We can have additional discussion on that. Right now, does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Mr. Allen, and I see Ms. McAlpine also has her hand up. Mr. Allen?
Yes, I was just curious. I know the sign is an LED-style sign. Is there any more moving text or lighting on that sign other than the LED portion?
The box sign itself above it, that states "American Legion", that's a total static sign, that's illuminated.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. McAlpine?
Um, Mr. Eisenhower, I have a question. As someone who frequently drives by the American Legion and has been inside, it is my perception that, that the changes in food and the changes, I'm not sure if it's under your command or others, that there seems to be a lot more people coming to the Legion. And given Ms. Ward's comments, that additional activity, which I think is wonderful, and it's speaking, personally, I've been in there, and it's, it's been much busier than it has been any day of the week. But I do agree that a sign that is, that is visible to people either coming eastbound or westbound is critical. And I just foresee people all of a sudden coming up on the sign, slamming on the brakes, someone rear-ends them, and we're potentially causing more issues and concern. So, I, I don't have a problem with it. I do agree that it, it could look a little bit more modern and up-to-date. And given the fact that this really stemmed from a truck hitting the sign, it was not, you know, just something that they decided to do and they're incurring costs. I do think that their request is, is reasonable.
Thank you. Do any other members have any questions for the applicants? Okay, seeing none. I'll open the public hearing portion of the meeting. And the public will have the opportunity to speak on this matter, to speak during the public comment. Participants in the webcast can utilize the raise hand function by selecting management, excuse me, manage participants on the bottom of your dashboard, and then select the more button in the bottom right-hand corner. Our moderator will call your name aloud and unmute you so that you can speak. For those that have called in, you can be placed in the queue for public comment by selecting star nine. Our moderator will announce the last four digits of your phone number for recognition and unmute you so that you can speak. Participants will have three minutes to speak, as they would if we were meeting in person. Once your three minutes are up, you'll be muted by our moderators. Additionally, comments can be submitted prior to or at this time to zoning@berkeleymish.net. to zoning@berkleeish.net, where residents and community members can submit public comments as well. Your email must be able to be read in less than three minutes. Given the circumstances with the virtual space, we may not be able to read through all the email comments, but know that we will have them stored and acknowledged on the public record. Now, to participate in the public comment, you can dial by phone at three one two six two six six seven nine nine and enter the following meeting ID, nine five two eight two seven eight four two zero zero. At this time, we'll review our public comments. Erin, can, uh, do you have any emails that we see prior to the meeting?
Uh, yes, we did receive one email from a local resident. Um, it was included in your packet. I will read it, uh, its entirety. Hello, Erin, my name, my home is on Rosemont, and I received a letter from the city about this sign at the Legion. I have no problem with them putting up a new sign from a Berkeley business owner. I wish them the best. They do a lot for the city of Berkeley. They are great neighbors. Thank you, Dottie Payne. This email was received Tuesday, April twenty-eighth.
Thank you. Okay. And Ms. Mathis, have we received any emails? Do we have anybody in the queue who wants to speak?
None at this time.
Okay. I'll just repeat the contact information once more to give everyone an opportunity. You can email at zoning@berkleeish.net, or you can dial by phone at three one two six two six six seven nine nine. Enter the meeting ID, nine five two eight two seven eight four two zero zero. And to be placed in the queue, select star nine. And we'll give it a few more seconds here to see if anybody calls in or sends an email. No further requests, Ms. Mathis?
No, sir.
All right. Okay, well, at this point, I'll close the public hearing portion of this agenda item and return it back to the board for a discussion and a motion. Would anybody like to be recognized? I do have a question for staff. Ms. Schludow?
Yes.
If they were to propose and place a compliant ground sign, would a wall sign be permitted on the building? Say, on the west side of the building?
Um, for any building that's on a corner, you're allowed one sign per street frontage. So they could do a sign on, uh, 12 Mile and Henley, I believe it is. Um, so it is possible for them to do that. However, if they, um, they don't have any other sign on the front of 12 Mile, which is why they are able to do the sign that they have there.
Oh, you're saying that this sign's allowed because they don't have a wall sign, right?
They don't have a front wall sign on 12 Mile, yes.
Okay. All right. Ms. Ward, and then Mr. Gesund, I see your hand.
Mr. Evans, if, if they were to take advantage of that opportunity, I, it would only benefit those people who are eastbound on 12 Mile and would not, um, be of any benefit to motorists traveling west on 12 Mile.
Thank you. Mr. Gesund?
My question is more for the, uh, actually for the staff. Do we have any digital signs like this in Berkeley? Or are they all reader boards similar to what the American Legion used to have?
We have electronic LED signs permitted in the city, yes.
Okay. Do we have any that are up right now?
Um, there's lots of them on Woodward. I, I couldn't give you, I couldn't give you a specific, uh, location off the top of my head. But yes, we do allow them.
Okay.
Any additional comments? Would anybody like to, uh, perhaps float? Mr. Krug?
Yeah, I was looking at the way they've designed this, and I've noticed that they've pushed the sign so it goes to the east. So that as far as the non-conforming, I know the pole's still non-conforming, but the sign itself, at least they've taken the opportunity to push that to the east, to one side of that pole. So you've got, as it's right now, a couple of feet less hanging out towards 12 Mile than there would be with the new sign.
So in effect, uh, I see your hand, Mr. Hanchett. They're, they're somewhat reducing the non-conformity.
Correct.
Right. Okay. Mr. Hanchett?
Yeah, I thought that that was pretty significant as well, because that, yeah, obviously, that's the main issue at, at hand here. And, uh, they've done everything that they can to, um, reduce that. And by moving it over, um, I, I think it's in a better position than it was before.
I, I would agree with you, Mr. Hanchett, and Mr. Krug. And Mr. Chairman, if you would, um, entertain a motion?
Certainly.
Um, I would move that we approve the, um, non-conforming sign, um, with an LED version of four two oh seven nine West 12 Mile Road, the Veterans of Foreign War, uh, Hall, um, for, um, uh, the benefit of, um, providing, um, a, a better sign, an improved sign for the motor and public.
Okay, and so you're, uh, your motion is to approve the request, uh, uh, as, uh, approve it as requested, correct?
Yes.
Great, okay. We have a motion by Member Ward to approve the request as presented. Do we have? We have support from Mr. Allen?
Also, uh, just to correct what Ms. Ward said. She said the VFW. It's actually the American Legion.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah. And, and just to sort of be clear. Yeah, and thank you, Mr. Allen. That's just simply why I said, uh, as proposed, just to make sure that, uh,
Yeah.
I think we can all recognize when she's saying.
Yeah.
Okay. And, uh, Ms. McAlpine, I see your hand is up.
I had just, uh, raised my hand to provide a second as well, but we are good now.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any additional comments on the motion? Ms. Schludow? I think we're ready for a rule call vote.
McAlpine? Yes. Ward?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Gesund?
Yes.
Hanchett?
Yes.
Krug?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes. Well, congratulations, you have your variance. Thanks for coming out tonight and participating.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kaiser. I'll be in touch with you the next day or so to go over next steps with you.
Thank you, Erin.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Thanks you too.
Thank you.
All right, our next item on the agenda, our rules of procedure, which we're to review on a yearly basis. Ms. Schludow has provided us a copy, and I believe there's, uh, one proposed, uh, modification, Ms. Schludow?
Yes, at the, um, last zoning Board of Appeals meeting that met, uh, oh, so many months ago in February, um, or was it March? Whenever, whenever we last met. Um, it was discussed that, um, there were some ordinance amendments that were going before, uh, City Council to be adopted, um, that had, uh, specific requirements for, uh, attendance and trainings and things of that nature that are already included in the rules of procedure. Um, therefore, I added just this one small amendment for me to the, uh, section one. The following rules of procedure shall be in effect unless otherwise, unless overwritten by local ordinance. Um, this will encapsulate anything that, um, council, uh, is then entertaining or adopting at this point. And then we can go through, uh, in a little bit more detail, um, uh, next, uh, the next time they're up for reviews, so January, February of twenty twenty-one.
Great, okay. Do you want to have any comments or questions for Ms. Schludow on that? I thought of one, and I just thought of it as we're going to digital meetings and reading our protocols. Would it be prudent for this board to have in our rules of procedure something about the time limit? And the reason why I suggest that is I know of a school board here in Michigan that, because they didn't have rules, the, uh, meeting went a lot longer than it should. Not that anybody wanted to shut anybody down, but, um, essentially, um, I think it would benefit this board, uh, all the board members as well as the members of the public if, um, perhaps, rather than presuming that everybody knows we have a three-minute limit, maybe put those in the rules of procedure. And so that was just my thought. I thought, floated out there and see if anyone had any comments on that.
That's a good idea. It protects us and the public.
I, I could support that, uh, Mr. Chairman.
I'd be okay with that as well.
Same here.
Me as well.
Yep, no issues.
Okay. Now, the challenge I look at, because I, I propose it right now to throw it in there. We're supposed to get these three days before. That's what our rules say. So, since we didn't receive them three days before, because I just talked about it tonight, would it be prudent to, uh, have Ms. Schludow insert those? And, uh, we can, uh, follow through on that at our next meeting?
I thought those were already in there, but I'll double-check. And if not, then we'll certainly, um, put them in. But I thought we had a, a minimum, a minimum time limit on the public comment in there.
Yeah, okay. Um, it, it didn't jump out at me, but certainly if we do, that's perfectly acceptable. Um, maybe perhaps the way to proceed would be... Now, I'm gonna take a, a minute here and just do a search. We've all got our minutes, our, our, our proposed, um, rules in front of us. Maybe we can all look real quick. I'm just thinking procedurally, like, do we post? Yeah, go ahead.
Section six of hearings?
Yeah.
Um, the chair may set a time limit and/or invite people to speak row by row to eliminate lines to the microphone. So, um, it gives you, uh, the discretion to set your own time limit. It's not specific in here. I thought it was a, a specified time limit.
Okay. Well, as long as we're doing digital meetings, it's clear, um, and I can make a point to, uh, since everybody is in agreement with the concept of, uh, maintaining a three-minute, uh, time limit. And, uh, Ms. Schludow, is it reasonable to, um, perhaps note that for our next review in January?
We can absolutely do that.
Okay, great. Is everybody okay with the proposed plan?
Yeah. It works great.
I am.
Ms. McAlpine, and then Ms., Ms. Ward?
Um, I absolutely one hundred percent agree with that. Is there somewhere in, um, the City Council or, um, i- is there somewhere specifically in there that, that denotes a specific amount of time? Or is it very similar wording that we have? And maybe you don't know the answer.
Mr. Ennin's here. Maybe he can answer it for us.
Sure. Um, I do not think we, off the top of my head, I don't think we have time limits specifically listed, but I'm not absolutely sure, but I don't think it's in there.
I think the Planning Commission does. Maybe that's where...
I don't necessarily need an answer today. I just think if we have enough, I feel confident to cover ourselves. I just, um, if we knew that the three-minute rule, the five-minute rule, whatever we want to, um, establish, given, uh, a situation where we would need to do that, I just think it would be great if they were all consistent across the board so there is no question of how long one group allows someone to talk and how long another group may or may not, or cuts them off.
Um, I would agree that that makes sense. And, you know, I'm not opposed even bringing this to council the next time we review our rules if it's not there.
Yeah, I agree with what Ms. McAlpine said. Ms. Ward, did you? I, I thought you had your hand up, but maybe it's not up now.
I, I did, but it is not, um, it's, uh, another point that I would like to bring up, uh, not germane to the discussion of time limit. It has to do with, uh, duties under section two, membership, bullet point two, duties. Um, I noticed in what was emailed to us or out on the, the, um, out, uh, on the web, um, under duties, um, subsection A, there were two bullet points. The first bullet point was members are, members who are unable to attend must contact the Community Development Director prior to the meeting and alert them to the cause of the absence. Then there was a second bullet point, and it said, uh, members who? And there was nothing else after that. And I just wonder what, what, uh, point two was supposed to be. Ms. Schludow?
This was taken directly from the rules of procedure that were adopted in two thousand and nineteen. Um, I, I, I'll, I'll have to verify what that is, but, uh, it might have just been a typo.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, with that being said, perhaps, um, well, any additional discussion on this? All right, so perhaps to move forward, uh, we can, uh, accept a motion to, uh, act upon these tonight, and then, uh, make it clear that, uh, staff will, um, put on our draft next time we look at this, uh, to review, uh, what Ms. Ward brought up, as well as the, uh, what I brought up. Does that sound fair?
It's great.
Okay, great.
So moved.
All right, so, Mr. Allen, you're proposing to, uh, uh, accept these as, uh, as written?
Correct.
Okay.
Support.
Part.
Do we have support from, uh, Ward and Gesund here?
Yes.
Okay. I think, Ms. Ward, you spoke first, great. Okay. Any additional? Any additional discussion? Okay, Ms. Schludow?
Ward?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Gesund?
Yes.
Hanchett?
Yes.
Krug?
Yes.
McAlpine?
Turn, turn your microphone on.
Yes, I don't know. Something happened to my whole thing, I'm sorry.
Evans?
Yes. And Ms. Schludow, thanks for the excellent job on this, as always. And, uh, also you and, uh, staff for getting this meeting and perfecting the procedure. It's been very helpful. So the next item on our agenda is other business. Do any board members have any other business they'd like to bring forth? Mr. Allen?
Yes, I'd just like to say that, uh, the past eight-plus weeks have been the most incredible thing I think I've ever gone through in my life. And the one thing that it's shown me is what a great community we have here in Berkeley. Neighbors helping neighbors, making sure that everyone is happy and healthy. And hopefully, we can get this behind us sooner rather than later and move on to our regular lives again. But I, just a thank you to everybody that lives in this community that stuck out their hand to help everyone.
Excellent, I think everybody agrees with that. Uh, any additional business that anyone would like to bring forth for the board? Ms. Schludow?
Yes, I'd like to bring up a couple of things. Um, for those whose terms are ending in two thousand and twenty, um, please make sure if you're still interested in reapplying or serving, uh, another term on the Zoning Board of Appeals, uh, to make sure you submit your applications. I know we've already received one, uh, but there is another individual who, whose term is ending, uh, in the next couple of months. Um, secondly, uh, I wanted to let you... Secondly, I wanted to let you all know that, and this is something we've discussed in a previous meeting, but the dimensional variance for administrative review for dimensional variances is being repealed from the zoning ordinance. That section 138-603 allows the building official and the city planner to act as the zoning board of appeals in certain limited circumstances where they meet specific criteria, such as they haven't had a variance within two years, they're not exceeding building setbacks, and I can't remember the third, but it's there. And this is problematic just because, you know, this isn't something that is common in any other community I've worked in. I've talked to a number of attorneys, planning consultants, both in the private and public field, and this is not a common practice. So in order to mitigate any future problems, we wanted to get that off of the books because that's not something that should be done administratively, that any variances from the zoning ordinance belongs in your very capable hands. So it went to the planning commission at the April 28 meeting where we held the public hearing. They recommended approval to city council to repeal it. And city council had their first reading of that this past meeting where they again approved it, so it'll go for their second reading at the end of this month. But I wanted you all to be aware of that as it does impact some of the cases that you may see in the future. Thirdly, I'm very excited to announce that our master plan survey has gone live. It is accessible on the city website, so I encourage all of you to take it. All of your friends, neighbors, family, anyone who lives in Berkeley, owns property in Berkeley, has a vested interest in Berkeley, we really want to hear from you and we really want to make sure that we can encapsulate your thoughts, feelings, wishes, dreams, hopes for the future of Berkeley. So please make sure you do.
Great, thank you very much.
You.
Anyone else with any comments? Okay, council member Ennin, liaison report.
Yeah, first, I just hope everyone's staying healthy and safe. And congratulate you all on a successful virtual meeting tonight, your first one. The state is allowing virtual meetings through at least the end of June. So if there's going to be any June meeting, it likely will be on Zoom again. I did have a chance to find in council's rules of procedures about time limits, and it states the mayor may set reasonable limits on the length of citizen comments. So it's parallel to what's already in your rules. Also, the ordinance on required training and attendance did pass in a past council meeting and is the law now. And this Tuesday and Wednesday, council will be starting our budget work sessions. Those start each evening at 6:00 PM. And proposed in the budget is a healthy training budget for the ZBA. And I've been very pleased to see you all utilize the training opportunities that we've had in the past and hope we can continue to extend them to you. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is public comments. And this is the opportunity for any member of the public to speak on anything not relating to the agenda. To speak during public comment, participants in the webcast can utilize the raise your hand function by selecting manage participants on the bottom of your dashboard and then select the more button on the bottom right-hand corner. Our moderator will call your name aloud and unmute you so that you can speak. For those that have called in, you can be placed in the queue for public comment by selecting star nine. Our moderator will announce the last four digits of your phone number for recognition and unmute you so that you can speak. Participants will have three minutes to speak as they would if we were meeting in person. Once your three minutes are up, you will be muted by our moderators. Additionally, comments can be submitted prior to or at this time to zoning@berkleymish.net. This is where residents and community members can submit public comments. Your email must be able to be read in less than three minutes. Given the circumstances with virtual space, we may not be able to read through all of the email comments, but know that we will have them stored and acknowledged on the public record. To participate in the public comment, dial by phone at 312-626-6799 and enter meeting ID 952-8278-4200. So at this time, I'll open it up to anyone who would like to provide a public comment. Ms. Mathis, do we have anybody in the queue?
Not at this time, Ms. Evans.
Okay. Well, as I did before, I'll just repeat the contact information. If you do call in, call 312-626-6799. Enter meeting ID 952-8278-4200. And to be placed in the queue, select star nine. Or you can email right now at zoning@berkleymish.net. And while we're waiting for anyone who'd like to speak to, exercise their opportunity, Ms. Mathis or maybe it's Stan or Dan. Do we, on the cable show, we're bringing broadcast live, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and do we show like the number and the email so it's right in front of everybody who's watching? Good, good.
That is correct.
Okay, so we write as much opportunity as we can for members of the public to speak. Ms. Ward?
A question to Ms. Matthews. Do we have any idea how many people are viewing this as, that are watching at home? Do we have any numbers?
I can't get those numbers. I don't have them offhand, but I'd be happy to get those to you and I can send those to Erin to share if you'd like.
That's okay. I just, I just wondered if we had an audience.
Yes, we do track those numbers. Typically, we do have viewership. I just don't have those numbers in front of me at the moment.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
I'll ask one more time, members of the public, Ms. Mathis, anyone queued up to speak?
Not at this time.
Okay. All right, well, it does appear that we don't have anyone who wants to speak, so I'll close that portion of the meeting out. And we have no other business, so I'll adjourn the meeting. Everybody have a great evening and we'll see you next time. Thank you very much.
Stay well. Have a good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.